Okay, all right, I'd like to call order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesdays, September thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and we'll start with roll call.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Amy Seboth Wilson.
Here.
Catherine Westeby.
Here.
Barbara Doss has been excused. Don Francis.
Here.
And Tom Knoll has been excused.
The first item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you prefer separate discussion and action. A is council minutes from our August twenty-third special and regular meeting, as well as our August thirtieth special meeting. B is payment of bills. C is financial report for August. D is appointments to boards and commissions. I do not have any this evening, but we have a lot of vacancies, so we're asking for citizen participation if you are interested and willing to serve on one of our committees. We have the Board of Appeals zoning, Board of Review, Commission on Aging, Community Safe Routes Committee, Historic Preservation, Alternate Position, and a Redevelopment Authority Board. So if you go onto the platteville.org website, you will find a section called Volunteer Opportunities, and that will give you information on these boards, commissions, and committees. Next is licenses. Temporary Class B license to sell fermented malt beverages for St. Augustine University Parish on Friday, September thirtieth, from noon until eleven fifty-nine P.M. for the Newman Olympics. And one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol are included in our packet. We have two street closing permits, one for St. Mary's Parish on Sunday, September twenty-fifth, from six A.M. to five P.M. for the Parish Festival. And UW Platteville on Saturday, October fifteenth, from ten thirty A.M. to four P.M. for the homecoming. Walk permit to Lancaster VFW, twenty-three forty-four, to raise awareness for veteran post-traumatic stress disorder and veteran suicide, and that will be on October sixteen. And the Halloween trick-or-treating hours are set on October thirty-first, from four P.M. to seven P.M. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
Of a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seboth Wilson.
Yes.
Westeby.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
If you are interested in speaking either under citizens' comments, observations, or petitions, we do ask that you fill out one of these green sheets. They're there on the table as you enter. I see that I have a couple of people who have asked to speak about something that we'll be talking about later, bike routes, so I'll call on you then. Right now, we'll just do the public information. And the first one is library fundraiser. Marilyn Gatchock.
Marilyn Gatchock, two thirty-five Virgin Avenue. I am just here to alert you and the people in Platteville that this coming Thursday, the fourteenth, at seven thirty, we are having a library fundraiser. And if any of you have been wandering around downtown, you can see that the library is, in fact, going up. The Library Foundation is sponsoring a fundraiser, and the Millennium Theater has agreed to participate to let us use the theater. We are showing a movie, which is a family-oriented movie. The name of it is Mr. Church, and it does feature Eddie Murphy, as I understand it. I just read that the other day. The tickets are ten dollars, and all of the proceeds will be going into the building library fund. Tickets are available at the library and from any member of the library board or the library foundation. So I hope you will all come, enjoy the movie, and help us with our fundraising for the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene Dorsey Sis.
Arlene Sis, one thirty North Hickory Street. I'm here about the Stone Cottage. This will be our last event coming up on the twenty-fourth of this month, and it'll be lots of fun for adults and children, and children and adults. But we're going to be doing all sorts of things. They're gonna use our ice cream and some of our other things, but kids and parents will be able to do things because we know what the next month is. All of you know what that is? Don't you know? Trick or treat? So we're getting you, getting them ready for trick or treat. And then I just want to say one other thing is that next year is our hundred-and-eightieth anniversary of the Stone Cottage. We hope to have some things going on that are special. If we have, if anybody wants to be a part of participating in helping to decide what we want to do, please call me, Arlene Sis. I'm in the phone book, one of those, and anyway, but we're very excited about the Stone Cottage because, as some of you know, or all of you know, it was built for a veteran of the American Revolutionary War. The reason he came to this area and in this part of the country is because he did not believe in slavery. So I think that says a whole lot about how willing he was to move this way. And one other thing is that the Stone Cottage is ten years old. The Wisconsin is the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only comments from citizens' comments that we have this evening. In our packet, we have reports, Boards, Commission, and Committee Minutes. Police and Fire Commission, Nichols, I have nothing to add. Airport Commission, Doss is not here this evening. Water and Sewer Commission, Killian Seboth Wilson.
Nothing to add.
No addition.
Library Board, Westeby.
Nothing to add.
Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Westeby.
Nothing to add.
Community Safe Routes Committee, Francis.
No.
And Museum Board, Seboth Wilson.
Nothing to add, but can I pause and make a related announcement?
Sure.
The David Canney Roundtree Trail is having their grand opening on Thursday, this week, Thursday. The Platteville Community Arboretum is encouraging everybody in the community to get out and use the trail at some point during that day if you can. And then at five o'clock at night, I believe everybody's meeting by Delta Three in the parking lot for the grand opening, followed by pizza and soda at Uno's, and everybody's invited.
All right. Looking forward to that. Other reports in our packet include the City Attorney itemized report for August, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for August, and the Airport Financial Report for August, as well as Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those? All right, seeing none, we will go on to our first action item, which is the stormwater management plan. Howard.
Yes. Staff and Delta Three Engineering have been working on our stormwater management plan in accordance with the Wisconsin DNR's permit. And you have a copy of the report with selected appendices. The full copy is right here. It's rather lengthy. Most, a lot of it are the appendices that have previously printed materials, the report itself, and different other items directly from the DNR. We are required, we were required to submit the draft report to the DNR in August. We did so. It's under review. And most of these items need to be implemented by Feb, in February. And so what I've got right now is Dan Dressen from Delta Three Engineering. He'll go through a quick briefing on where we are today and what our next steps are at this point. Thanks.
For those of you in our viewing audience in the room, the presentation is to the back of the room.
Good evening. Dan Dressens with Delta Three Engineering. As Howard has mentioned, I've got a, tried to make it a brief PowerPoint presentation of some of the highlights and more of what the city's next steps are with regards to stormwater management and the city of Platteville. For the council members, this will be somewhat familiar. At the work session in June, we had most of the hard data completed by then and summarized. So some of the slides will be very familiar, so I'm gonna kind of probably go through those fairly fast. Apologize for those in the audience who haven't seen this before, with the intent, though, of trying to get through this in a timely fashion, and then so we can concentrate more on what the next steps are for the city. What is a stormwater management plan? It's required by Wisconsin DNR. It's under two sixteen, and it's a municipal separate storm sewer system for over ten thousand people. So as soon as the city of Platteville hit ten thousand people at the last census, it triggered a mechanism with the DNR. Took a few years for the letter to come through, but ultimately, last year, February of two thousand and fifteen, the city received a letter meaning they had to meet the municipal separate storm sewer requirement, and that is abbreviated MS four. We submitted the draft report to DNR August twenty-third. They should be providing comments regarding the report and the modeling. In fact, they have had the modeling since June fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, shortly after our work session, and we haven't had no comments to date. We're thinking that's probably a good thing, or they're still backed up that they just haven't had a chance to get to it. So regardless, as soon as we hear back from the DNR, we will update and modify accordingly. The permit requirements, back in June at the work session, we went through all of these. We've got public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection, detection elimination, basically trying to prevent unwanted chemicals from going into the stormwater system. We have a construction site pollutant control, also known as erosion control. We have post-construction site stormwater management are basically the ponds and the biofilters that you see throughout town. We have a pollution prevention, which is also sediment removal. Portions of that is a stormwater management program, operations, and maintenance program for all city-owned facilities, and analysis of sediment removal and phosphorus removal. This requires twenty percent removal of particulates. At our work session, this is where we spent most of our discussion on. We have to create a storm sewer system map, an annual report as well. So as a summary from the June work session, how close is the city of Platteville to the twenty percent total suspended solids, which is the sediment removal requirement? Right now, the city is at eighteen point nine percent, which is good news. That means we're very close. However, it's not the matter of just doing a project. It's a matter of doing a few projects and implementing some different practices to make that twenty percent requirement. And later on, I'll discuss a little bit more about that. A schedule of compliance for this, since coverage date was February twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, that's when Howard sent his intent to apply form back in, we have a schedule to follow. If you remember this from the June work session, look at all the different things. We have activity, compliance date, goal for the compliance date, and the actual implementation date. Every item that we identified as being a goal for compliance, August twenty-third has been completed, which was part of our draft report. And probably what we're gonna talk about more tonight is the implementation date, which is the far right-hand side over there. We have a lot of items in our stormwater management plan. Now it's up to city staff and the council to implement them. So we give the tools to get started, and now it's up to the city to actually implement them. Let's see here. Also, we have going through some of the things. There were a few things that we did do ahead of time, in particular, the pollution prevention program and the stormwater management. They were both due in February, two thousand and seventeen, but it was hard to do a stormwater management report to talk about those things without actually doing them. So we are ahead of schedule on those, as well as a stormwater quality management assessment of compliance. So what are our next steps, also known as the city's to-do list? We need to create a public education outreach program, and we need to start the public involvement and participation plan. These two items, we'll talk about them the same because really, one is the information, and one is the other distribution of the information. So we talked about doing a webpage or a tab on your guys' of the city's webpage to talk about stormwater management flyers to be included in with the water and sewer bills. Public awareness on how, on what the city can do and what a citizen can do to help with the stormwater management. We will, it does require the cities to officially set up a program and beginning to engage the public, and that needs to be ready by February, two thousand and seventeen. So this is something that the city will need to take our stormwater management plan. As Howard said, the appendices are filled with all kinds of different education and outreach-type materials as examples that could be used for the public. The next thing the city needs to do is create an ordinance that regulates the construction site pollutants, the erosion control ordinance. The city currently has one, but it does not conform to the current DNR standard. When that was enacted ten, fifteen years ago, it followed the current DNR standards. Now it does not. So we need to use the model ordinance that we provided in the stormwater management plan that came from the DNR, and we need to modify that to the Platteville's needs. Whatever the modifications are, it cannot be less restrictive than the model ordinance. We can be more restrictive, but just not less. Some items to consider for the new ordinance, and these are some items that we discussed at the June work session. Right now, the DNR regulates all construction projects that are greater than one acre in size. We would recommend that all, that we have a small site recommendation. So that when we have the home that's doing a half acre of disturbance, or we have a business that's at point nine eight acres of disturbance where they don't quite trigger a DNR plan, but they're doing all the same things. Maybe we don't have to do the same requirements as we would for a one-acre site, but we still have some regulation. With the ordinance, we also talk about permitting, inspection, enforcement, fees, and then any additional requirements that we would come up with. Who should be involved in the ordinance creation? We believe that Howard and Joe should be involved with city staff at a minimum. In our task order to complete this, we have time in there to give technical assistance. We believe that UW Platteville should be included in this conversation because the university makes up a large portion of the city, and these ordinance will impact the campus. And then anybody else at the city council or city staff feel that should be involved in creating this ordinance. The schedule for completion, this needs to be approved by the council by February twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, so roughly five, five, five and a half months from now. Therefore, we really should begin reviewing this ordinance in October. We need to be presenting this to the plant commission December. That way, it gives us a, maybe a redo. If we go to the plant commission December, it can go back in January, but that way, we can present to the council in late December, January. Kind of the same thing, we have to need to create an ordinance for the post-construction stormwater management, how the runoff is handled after a project is complete. Once the currently, the city currently does not have one and relies on the DNR to regulate sites with disturbance greater than one acre. Our stormwater management plan includes the DNR model ordinance. Once again, it needs to be reviewed and modified to meet the city's needs, and it cannot be less restrictive than the DNR's model ordinance. Once again, items to consider, very similar to our erosion control comments, talking about some small site requirements, defining the design storms, permitting, plans, fees, inspection, enforcement. And probably one of the most important ones is long-term maintenance and record-keeping to make sure that the ones that are installed, we permit them, the ones that are gonna be stalled, they do get permitted, and then they get checked on a regular basis. Who should be involved in the ordinance creation? Essentially, the same people that are gonna be working on the erosion control ordinance. They're very similar. One's during construction, one's after construction. The same people would have the same expertise and the same concerns. Schedule for completion, it is, oops, it is the same as the erosion control, so this also needs to be in place by February twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. So we should be getting on this work in October, try to get it to the plant commission December, and get to the council in late December, January, so that it can be ready to go for February. We also need to create an ordinance that regulates illicit discharge, which are discharges, oils, paints, soaps, things of that nature into the storm sewer. The city currently does not have one, and in the plan, we have an example of one from another community. I believe it's from River Falls. We looked at another town, or maybe Black River Falls. I'm not sure which one it was. But they're both towns that are similar in size to Platteville, under twenty thousand, so we can get an idea of what those communities are doing. That's what we use as a model ordinance. The DNR does not have a model ordinance, but they do have some minimum requirements that need to be included. Items to consider, we need to have definitions of what actually is an illicit discharge, permitting, inspection, enforcement, fees, and then any additional requirements above what the minimum DNR standards are. Once again, who should be involved in this ordinance creation? Howard and Joe should be involved. We should be involved, and UW Platteville, once again, because this is gonna regulate them. And the nice thing about this one is that we have some time. We have basically, essentially, one year to get this ordinance complete. So once we get the post-construction and the erosion control taken care of, this one can be done in probably late winter into spring, so that's ready to go for August. We need to create an official storm sewer map. The city has a map one, has a storm sewer map right now. It's a Platteville Places GIS map. There are just some additional items that we need to do for that. So we will work with a GIS consultant that the city has currently hired and work with them on getting that information on there, and that needs to be completed by February of two thousand and seventeen. So we'll have to get started on that work simultaneously with the ordinances. The annual report, every year by March thirty-first, and every year after that, we need to submit an annual report. It need to be completed by city staff and/or city's consultant. What a lot of other communities do is you are required to give an update of where you're at with your TSS, your total suspended solids removal, which is your sediment removal. So the city staff typically will fill out the majority of it. They'll talk with the consultant, see if there's any additional projects to update the model, update it accordingly, compute a new percent removal. Or if there is no work being done in terms of stormwater, then you would just leave that the same as the previous year. We need to create and implement a pollution prevention program. This requires the city to create an official pollution prevention program for all city-owned facilities and municipal operations. We're gonna set up a pollutant reduction elimination procedures for maintenance operations and municipal-owned facilities. So maintenance operations would be street sweeping and yard waste removal. City does an excellent job of that already, but this just puts it in writing, saying that this is when and this is how you do it. Excuse me, and then you have municipal-owned facilities, city hall, street department, the pool, the parks. All of those have to have a pollution prevention program associated with them, and that's the stormwater pollution prevention plan for each one of them. Who should be involved in this? This would be a city staff, consultant, if necessary, for technical assistance, and any others that are, would be an interested party. Schedule for completion of this is next August, so once again, there is time to complete this, about eleven months. But during the winter months is a good time to be talking about this, so instead of waiting until next June, July, when everybody's busy, we recommend that the city staff and anybody else that's involved with this program maybe start in January. And then the question is, is will a council need to approve each pollution prevention plan for each facility? And that's something that will have to be brought up during discussion as well. Work toward, working towards a twenty percent reduction in suspended solids, which is our TSS. The city must continue to work towards that reduction, because there is no official deadline. The city doesn't have to meet twenty percent by two thousand and seventeen, or two thousand and eighteen, or two thousand and nineteen. Right now, the way the, the DNR standard reads is that you, as long as you are getting closer and you're doing your best effort to achieve that twenty percent, they're okay with that. That make, that very well could change at some point in time, but that's our current policy. In the annual report, the city must summarize the activities that were completed in the previous year that show progress towards that goal, and some examples that include projects completed that did increase the suspended solids removal percentage. For example, we have a new developer that comes in, and he develops twenty acres, and he puts in a new stormwater management pond. We can include that. The city redoes a street like Valley Road from five or six years ago, where we put in several stormwater management facilities in there, that type of thing. We can include any type of planning of projects that may increase the TSS removal percentage. For example, Howard's capital improvements program, every year that's updated, there are a lot of projects in there that are not funded necessarily, but they're in there, which shows that they are on the city's radar. And then budgeting of projects that may increase the removal percentage, even though they may not be funded. So how does the city get to that twenty percent particulate reduction, suspended solids? Previously, and this is kind of a summary of the work session from June, but real quick, for example, we could utilize new development. One scenario that we gave back in June is new development could move the removal percentage to twenty percent. For example, this is the part of, this is just outside the city's industry park, on areas that are currently not developed. If we, if the city were to have sixty-five acres of commercial and/or industrial land developed, and assuming that they follow the current DNR standards, that would push the city to their twenty percent removal requirement. Another option would be to construct stormwater managed facilities at key locations within the city. I know this map's hard to tell, but each one of these dots represents a potential location or an existing facility, stormwater facility. And I, and so this kind of shows you a good where, a good location of where they could be installed. This chart here, which is all, which is included in the plan, talks about some combination of projects that would move the city to that twenty percent. In June, we talked about a project over by the high school, between the high school and Water Street, and we also talked at one along Business One Fifty-One behind all these. Yet those two were completed, and I know it's hard to read because it's small print, but that, if those two projects were completed, that would put the city to twenty point three percent. And went through several different combinations. Some of them were new, some of them were retrofitted of existing facilities. But in the result, we came up with six different scenarios where these projects could be completed, and the city meets that their twenty percent reduction. Another option is just to retrofit existing stormwater facilities within the city limits. Same map as before. Under this scenario, all the orange dots are ones of our existing facilities that could be modified. And once again, here's a list of its possible projects. We've got the Valley Road Pond. Right now, that's just a dry pond. The water just flows through it. That could be excavated out and be created and be turned into a wet pond, which would have some, some wonderful removal rates. We've got a pond on Hathaway Street, excuse me, a dry detention basin on Hathaway Street. We can convert that to a pond, and the same thing with Greenwood Avenue. That's a, that is on university property, but does collect all the water from Greenwood Avenue. But these are just examples of some projects that could be done. On this list of possible projects, these are just examples of the types of projects that could be completed. They're just examples. All projects would need to be approved by the city council before proceeding, and other projects may present themselves as redevelopment occurs or as property becomes available. So for example, along a waterway, maybe a property comes up for sale, the city looks at it, and they say, well, that'd be a great location to put a sedimentation basin or put a stormwater management facility in there, slow the water down versus trying to maybe redevelop it. So these are just some opportunities that could arise over the course of time. And then a combination of all the scenarios that were presented could be used to achieve the twenty percent reduction goal. What will this cost the city? The annual report costs fifteen hundred dollars per year to submit. Completion of the report is gonna talk, is gonna consist of staff time and/or consultant time. Ordinance creation, there are three of them that need to be created. Talking with staff a little bit, ordinances are tough to figure out how long, much time they take, but we're gonna be starting with two brand-new ones and modifying, or actually, we're gonna start with three, three brand-new ones and modifying all three of them. So we can assume at least forty hours plus for each, plus technical assistant from the city consulting engineer and the city attorney. Permitting, inspection, enforcement, legal action, training and certification costs. There is an erosion control and stormwater management certification you can obtain from a agent, from a group here in Wisconsin. Staff time is something that's gonna have to start being budgeted for. It will vary from year to year and depend on final ordinance language and the number of projects being taken on that year. So therefore, additional staff may be required, and then technical assistants may be required from consulting engineer and attorney, depending on the project. The public information education programs, once again, we're going to have staff time, publication and or printing costs, website additions for the stormwater pollution prevention plan for city-owned facilities, staff time to develop plans for each facility, staff time to review maintenance procedures for each facility, technical assistance from whether it's an engineer or a supplier. And then any capital projects required to bring those facilities into compliance. Um, for example, one item that is mentioned in our plan is that the feeling station at the wastewater treatment facility does not have a cover over it, nor is it in a containment unit. Um, that's something that we would recommend that the city start budgeting for. And then finally, we have capital projects, um these are gonna be the most expensive, most of the previous ones are time with a little bit of consultant and attorney fees, but really, it's more just staff time. When we come to capital projects, um we're looking at staff time to prioritize and evaluate cost effectiveness, consultant fees for, to design and construction costs, um these are where the costs are gonna really um increase. How can this be funded? This is something we talked about briefly in June. Um, in the past, they were typically funded by a storm water utility, um however, under current uh state law, they're now longer to, allowed to be created. Uh, fees for permitting, enforcement penalties, um storm water drainage districts, general fund. Um, we can apply for DNR clean water fund loans and grants if we have a really uh bad situation, working kind by service groups. And then um summary of all of this, um not trying to scare anybody, but there is still a lot of work to be completed with the ordinances primarily to meet all the MS four requirements. Um, city will need to start incorporating additional staff time, consulting fees and construction costs and budgeting process to meet their MS four requirements. The city, however, is nearly at the twenty percent um sus- suspended solids reduction requirement, and I would say that was much higher than we thought it was going to be, we figured it'd be more in the ten to fifteen percent range, and it's just shy of twenty percent at nineteen. And, and really, the city is on track to meet all of its MS four requirements. Um, just a lot of work that's gonna be done in terms of internal between now and February. So, um that's the kind of the quick and dirty of what our uh storm water management plan was. Um, we really wanted to highlight what had to be done, um so that the council can start directing staff to meet those requirements. Um, a lot of things we probably would recommend to get started in October, so that we have, everybody has plenty of time to thoroughly, thoroughly research the different ordinances. Um, the planning commission has time, the city council has time to review and understand the impacts of the ordinances because um some of the recommendations that we give um will require more work from developers, will require more work from the city. But in the end, the intent is to alleviate some of the issues that occur when a small site is being developed, for example. The runoff is addressed, storm water runoff is addressed, those types of things. With that, are there any questions?
I have a question. Uh, which document went into uh DNR? The council received this one that's titled preliminary.
Correct.
And then there was another one that Howard referred to, thicker. Did that go to DNR? Which one went?
The one that was thicker, the one that you got a hard copy of.
Okay. And then um on, on this one, I had a suggestion or two, um and then I found some typos. Wh- when will those be incorporated?
They will be incorporated once we receive comments back from the DNR.
Okay. Then another question I have is um, maybe this is review, but how did uh they come up with a twenty percent? Number.
How did the DNR come up with that?
Yes.
Actually, it was EPA.
Yeah, it was EPA.
Federal EPA.
EPA?
Correct.
Is that just for Platteville or number of cities?
That's for the entire state, that's the phase one MS four permit. Um, Howard, when was the, it was at forty percent, when was that? I think Governor Walker reduced that.
Correct.
When he came into office, it was at forty percent.
Yeah, uh what I'm, what I'm getting at is based on, based on the Clean Water Act, this has been going on for a number of years. Larger communities were under this back in nineteen nineties, um Milwaukee, Madison, things like that, and then uh two thousand other communities were, were involved in this as, as they induce, introduced uh additional restrictions and and clamp down on communities. But the, the federal EPA guidelines had twenty percent as the rule. Wisconsin being the uh environmentally proactive state that it is, decided back early on to raise that goal to forty percent. Um, after they tried to implement that and they were working with all of these communities, they were getting very little return for a lot of money. You'd have a lot of these communities with thirty percent, thirty-one percent, and they would be spending millions of dollars to just barely move the needle uh for different things, cause all the low-hanging fruit has been done. So, that's when the state decided to come back and say, okay, um, you know, we'll go back to the federal twenty percent rule. All you communities who've made it to the thirty percent, you can't backslide. But those who haven't gotten there yet, you know, you need to meet twenty percent, and that's where we fit in.
Now, new construction, as I read, has to be eighty percent.
Correct.
Correct.
And then redevelopment has to be forty percent.
Correct. Right, and that's under scenario one, as a city is developed or redeveloped, um by the simp, by, by the virtue of those having those types of sediment removal, they will actually move the city closer to the twenty percent by default.
Then I was especially interested in this comment in the, in the, in the plan about uh regulation of land and the ET, what you.
Well, that was a, well, that was a comment that um in reference to um properties within the extraterritorial zone of Wisconsin, of, excuse me, Platteville. Um, right now, there's no statutory, that statute, that, excuse me, that would allow that to happen. Um, with plating, that's a statute. Um, but this would have to be an agreement between the city and the township to allow that. Um, in reference to certain projects that are on the perimeter of Platteville that have caused the city some heartache over the years, um that's kinda what that was in reference to. I think that would be a good uh partnership between the city and the township to try to regulate some of that because there are a lot of waters from the township that flow into the city.
Thank you.
I have a question and a comment.
Hmm.
First one was, we talked before about how the city and the university now will need to have their own storm water management plan, and you've been talking with the DNR to see how those two will interact, do we have any update on that?
Um, they basically told us that we would have our own, and then both, yes, they'd both be permitted. Cause the DNR, or, excuse me, university, that's a system-wide requirement for that.
Oh.
And whereas the cities is a state mandated.
Okay, interesting. Okay, um next comment I have then is, I just wanna make sure that as we move forward with this, we talk about um projects like rain gardens that may not be as impactful as a single um like engineered solution maybe, but that could serve a really great educational component as well.
And they're mentioned in our public um education and outreach program.
Yeah, I just wanna reinforce that it would be a really nice measure to take, and if we can figure out a way to calculate them toward the twenty percent, that'd be excellent. Thank you.
So, Dan, when we're talking about the particulars of the solids, so the storm, we have a storm or there's water runoff and it goes into our storm water collection, and then what? It, it gets, goes to the treatment system and?
No, um.
Alright, so, for the public, if you could explain what's going on, why we need to do this, what the effect is.
Yep, what the impact is, is we're trying to reduce the amount of sediment that eventually makes it to our stream. So, we're trying to capture it before it makes it into our storm sewer system. Or if it has entered our storm sewer system, like for example, down on Valley Road by the dog park where it has entered in storm sewer systems, it gets put out in a pond where there's a chance for that sediment to settle out and then not make it to the stream, that's what our goal is. Part of this, what we don't talk about here is, it's also phosphorus, and everybody hears with phosphorus with farming and the municipality and and the impacts on the streams, is that sediment has a lot of phosphorus into it, so with, in it, excuse me. So, when we're removing sediment, by default, we're also removing phosphorus, but they don't necessarily regulate phosphorus at this time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Actually, a question and a comment, this kinda refers back to the rain gardens, I'm just reading through the public investment and the public education. Lot of great ideas, and the next step is for the city to take um charge and lead that. So, by February seventeenth, it needs to be ready, it says it needs to be ready, does the plan need to be ready or needs to be ready, the plan? And we have to start by then?
And you have to be starting, correct.
Any other questions or comments?
I talked to Howard about this, um one of the, you have three scenarios as far as meeting the twenty percent. And one of them is to complete development. Okay, when you do that, uh you're actually putting in more total suspended solids into the bodies of water. In other words, you're, you're doing more pollution, even though you're doing more development.
Right.
It's sorta like the solution to pollution is dilution.
The, the, as we had discussed, the, the issue here is a percentage basis. And so, if you are, you're correct that as Platteville develops, there will be additional gross number of pounds discharged into the stream. But what DNR looks at is if we did nothing at all, no storm water ponds, no rain gardens, no nothing, how much would, would we be discharging? And then looking at what we're actually discharging, is that a twenty percent reduction or better? And what we're saying is that because of the percentages, yes. You know, we will go from nine hundred thousand pounds to one point two million pounds if we did nothing. We would go from seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds to seven hundred and eighty thousand pounds. The, the, the difference is greater, which means that the percentage of reduction is, is greater. The gross number of pounds is more, but the reduction is what is counted by the DNR. It's.
So, they're not.
Percentage, not gross numbers.
They're not dealing with absolute number.
Correct. Yep, the, the idea that you can have more development and then have your percentage removal increased is it, it's basically following their rules, but I don't think that was what their intent was, but that's what ends up happening in certain cases.
Other questions or comments? Alright, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
The intent now is that hopefully the council will approve the uh storm water management plan uh pending approval by the Wisconsin DNR, so that we can proceed to the next steps as he outlined.
So, we would need a motion to have the common council review and adopt the preliminary southwest, or excuse me, solid waste management plan, storm water management plan pending approval of the Wisconsin DNR. And if that approval is given, staff can begin work on an ordinance, ordinance changes and options to meet the reduction goal for council review, which will probably begin in October, November, December, it looks like. So, is there a motion?
I will make a motion that the council will adopt the preliminary storm water management plan pending review by the DNR. What's the correct wording?
Yep.
No, second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Now, the preliminary is not what went in, so we have this large document.
Well, the, um if you wanna call it a draft storm water management plan instead of the preliminary, that's fine by me, um it's.
Well, as I said before, one of, the one we got uh at the previous meeting says preliminary, and then Dan uh gave me to look at this larger one, and there are differences.
Minor differences, I.
Minor differences?
Well, there, there's some paragraphs left out and there's some things added. So, which one are we voting on?
The uh, call it the draft plan dated August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen.
Wrap, wrap, that'd be fine.
Alright, we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, next item is the bicycle routes plan.
Okay. Um, this uh was up last time, but uh Community Safe Routes Committee had proposed installing bike lanes on Ridge Avenue with removal of parking from one side of the street to accommodate the bike lanes. The common council approved the concept of the Safe Routes Committee holding a public information meeting with the neighbors to determine their thoughts. One of the major comments was that citizens would like to see a more comprehensive plan for bicycle lanes in the city. And so, this comprehensive plan is the result of that work. Um, we're looking at routes that would connect our existing bicycle trails uh and such with the parks, the schools and other residential areas. Um, so, at this point, if this is, if this plan is approved by the common council, the Safe Routes Committee would begin scheduling public info meetings, information meetings for owners and residents along these routes. Based on comments from uh, from the Ridge Avenue uh approval from July, we would be looking at uh the connections uh over towards the middle school and Legion Field is the way that I, the way that I understood the council's guidance. So, uh we would continue to solicit public comment on the best, best methods for implementing bicycle routes, either by sharrows, by bike lanes or other, other means to uh help facilitate bicycle traffic throughout the city, and, and we have that, those routes. Um, and so you have the list of the plans or the, the plan uh on maps, and so staff is recommending that you approve the maps as, as the bicycle route plan with specific implementation as the uh, as we, as we continue, you know.
Questions?
I don't have a question about the particular routes or routes, whatever you wanna say. But a citizen uh spoke to me about the width of the bicycle lane and the width of the auto lane. So, I decided to measure at one spot, and so what is the, what is supposed to be the official width of the bike lane? I came up with three feet, two inches between white stripes.
I had uh, we had done uh three and a half feet center to center on, on those uh bike lanes up on Ridge Avenue.
Center to center, you mean center of the strip?
Center of the stripe to center of the stripe.
And then the auto, I got a width of six feet, four inches between the strips.
Yeah, um, the uh parking lane is narrow. I will, you know, I will s- understand that. But uh most sedans uh do in fact fit within the designated parking lane. Um, I've worked with the police department and uh vehicles that are oversized. The police department uh has said that they will use discretion as to uh how to enforce that if they in fact hang over a little bit. Um, it's based on the width of the streets involved. Uh, we'll need to work on that on individual streets. Um, the, the, the issue here is that Ridge Avenue has very few cars parked on it unless there's a special event. Um, day in and day out, if you are on Ridge Avenue, you'll see three or four cars parked on Ridge Avenue uh overnight or things like that. Um, like I say, the only times that you really see it parked heavy is if there's an event at a person's house or, or at uh Smith Park or something like that. So, the, the incidents of conflict are, are very, very small.
This may be getting off the subject, but if the person opens his, her car door. This may be getting off the subject, but if the person opens his, her car door and the bicycles runs into it, whose responsibility is it as far as the accident?
That I do not know. I'm, I'm not an attorney or anything like that. That's, that's a conflict that has the possibility of occurring during any bicycle use.
Because the lane up there, it, it's, I call it relatively narrow or spaced. Okay, thank you.
All right, we do have, if no one else on the council has a comment or a question right now, we do have two people who have asked to speak on this. The first is Bill Cazada, Cazeta. If you will come up to the microphone and we ask that you give your name and your address. And if you could limit yourself to about five minutes of comment, that would be great.
Bill Cazeta, 70 Ridge Avenue. We wanted to speak tonight, especially those of us that live on the Ridge Avenue across from Smith Park. We feel that, first of all, we weren't fairly given a chance to talk about this. We were invited to the March meeting, but when we left there, the impression was that there were a lot of objections, a lot of concerns. They were going to go back and make a new plan and then let us know. But we did not know they were going to present it, so we were kind of caught blindsided. Like Howard said, one of our concerns was the parking when there's events in the park, the 4-H clubs, the civic groups, birthday parties, they'll park both sides of Ridge Avenue and they'll also park on Carla Street. Now coming this fall soon, you will also add how many vehicles when those apartment buildings open because there was a variance given to them for, I believe, 23 less parking spots than is required. So those people now need, if they park on the street or they're guests. So parking in that area was our biggest concern. Me personally, I'm, I want to, you know, tell you how it affects me and know what I can do if, if we can't change it, how we go forward. Many people know, if they're in my neighbors, I have a utility trailer 14 foot long in my truck. I would normally back it up to my garage, put the tailgate down, unload tools, snowmobiles, motorcycles, lawnmowers, whatever I'm working on. Now that I have to park across the road, I can't back up to my garage. I, can I ride a snowmobile, a four wheeler, push a dead lawnmower, carry my ladders across the street? It's unsafe and it's not illegal, so it affects us greatly there. We just feel we didn't have, there was concerns. We had some ideas, but we were never, got to bring them back to the table. Mine personally would be end the bike route at the west end of Smith Park and direct them into the park. We're putting them on three feet and we say people and bikes can go on that three feet now. You have five or six feet there, so why can't bikes and people go over there and return the parking for people of Smith Park and the people that live on Ridge Avenue there? So my biggest question is, as council members, you didn't get, give us a fair chance or come get our input. Maybe that's not, I don't know whose responsibility it is if we don't know sometimes what's going on. So where do we go from here? Are any questions?
That's what we'll be discussing.
Okay. But where do we go if we want to change Ridge Avenue? Is that set in stone?
Well, no, that would be something that certainly the neighborhood could come back and ask for a change.
And is it, my understanding, it's one year review? Somebody, I was told this is a one-year project, that, and so how do you judge that after a year? Do we need to get, do I need to canvass the streets until people say you're good or bad against it? I'm not against bike routes. I just feel there it has caused inconvenience or made it impossible for me. And to add to what Howard said, and he said most vehicles will fit in that parking spot. My trailer is near eight foot, my truck is near eight foot, but even your picture in the Platteville Journal shows a minivan that cannot fit in that spot, you know. So I'm not, in that area, it just doesn't seem to work. The rest of the road, yes, very few cars and trucks. Other neighbors may have some concerns, but it doesn't seem to work there. And I've made some bullet, some bulletin points if you, the city council, would like from, this is from my recollection of concerns and objections at the meeting or census happen, things we have talked about. So you're welcome to review it. Tom Noll was gracious enough to stop by and look at stuff with me and see, and firsthand what we objected to or had problems with. So he said if you had any questions, you could ask him also.
Sure.
So can I, can I have a couple of follow-ups?
Sure.
Okay, thanks for coming and talking about it. Having been involved in the process, we did, you would have to have read the council agenda to know what was coming up to be able to come back and talk because it was on the agenda a couple of times since the meeting. But a couple of your concerns about the width of your car, can you park around the street on Carla if your car's too wide to park across the street from your house?
I could. It's going to be inconvenient when it's wet or snowy, but then I have farther to carry my stuff if I have my trailer or my, back out of my truck.
So a related question, and we got an email with this, I think it was the same list. You had brought up, I think this was from you then, that elderly people who are parking on their side of the street to unload groceries will park in the bike lane or would have parked where the bike lane is in order to unload their groceries.
She is here to speak on that tonight.
Okay, so this is a related question then. If you are unloading or loading, I'm assuming it wouldn't be a huge disturbance to park in the bike lane temporarily with flashers on probably?
I don't...
And this is a question to Howard then I guess, or Doug. Is that something we would give a ticket out for? It seems reasonable to me that if there's loading or unloading, that you could block that lane temporarily with flashers? I'm assuming it wouldn't happen that often.
Typically, if a vehicle is parked with flashers on, we cut them some slack.
Okay.
I mean, it's fairly evident that they're only there for a short duration.
Okay, thank you. So it seems reasonable that the intent isn't to make things really difficult. I know it's inconvenient, but thank you, Doug. That was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Esther Pleva.
I also made copies for all of you. It's a teacher party. And I'm sorry, I don't have much of everybody, so you can share it between yourselves.
I think we got them.
Oh, you have that? Okay. Oh, my name is Esther Pleva, and I live at 30 Ridge Avenue and built the house there in 1988, and so I've lived there for the last 28 years. My piano students, and I've taught piano for over 35 years, cannot park in front of my home. The majority are in elementary and middle school. And tonight I had a student whose mother parked there and I now have a no, two no parking signs in my front yard. And I had the student go out and tell her mother, please move the car. But these parents, if they can't park in front of my house on the north side, then they have to park on the park side, the south side, and it's during a busy time of the afternoon, and the kids have to run across the street. So I'm watching for them, their parents are watching for them. I don't want a student to get hit. So that's my safety concern. The bike lane on the north side has an uneven surface. I've walked the entire Ridge, Ridge Avenue. And I started bike riding 40 years ago avidly. I crossed the state of Florida and back in 1972. I wrote my master's thesis on the effect of adventure bicycling and stress. I have led bicycle trips. I've worked on bicycle trips. I've ridden thousands of miles. And I know if a rider were to go from the cement gutter, which is part of the measured bike line, to the uneven paved blacktop surface, their tire's going to catch and they're going to fall over. And that's really a safety concern. If you read the Wisconsin Rules of the Road for Bicyclists, when there is a white line on the side of the, of the road, a bicyclist is supposed to stay within 12 inches of that line. And I've been watching ever since the lines were painted outside of my house, a majority of bikers just still bike in the middle of the road going to and from. And there were some bikers pulling burleys. They don't fit in the bike lane. They'd taken their children to school and they were going home and it's, that's just not working for them. Inconvenience, I'm over 65, which has already been addressed. I don't mean to repeat that. And so now I'll, I'll put on my flashers when I load my groceries and I can get them in the house instead of climbing up the stairs. I did some research into cost. I have, I have three posts in my front yard. And each of those posts, those green posts, cost $25.65. And if you have a no parking sign, that is $18.91. There are 22 posts put up along the north side of Ridge Avenue. And you're projecting a further path in other parts of the city. And the posts alone cause, and the signs, and the city workers, they do produce their own signs, saving the city some cost, is over $980.32. It didn't include any labor for those men to dig those holes. And I was out there today talking to them and they were working very hard. We have really good city workers and are painting, painting the lines. And here we want to expand this, this, this system to streets that, for dairy days, there were cars parked to the corner of Fourth and Ridge on both sides and was one lane traffic. You want to expand it in front of the swimming pool. That was covered on both sides too. And now today, down to the middle school, coming here, there was football practice. That was on both sides of Fourth down to the middle school, which is one lane traffic. Since I've lived at 30 Ridge Avenue my 28 years, there hasn't been any bicycle vehicular, vehicular accidents. And so why in 2016 do we need this safe bike lanes? I mean, I know we have to educate the people and their schools do a wonderful job of trying to educate bike safety. I just, I just don't see people using the lanes and I just see it more of a, it's a white lane there and, and it's more of a, another mark on the, another mark on the, on the cement and another post in our yards and more finances for the taxpayers to pay. Those are my observations. And I, I do appreciate it because biking is wonderful. It's a wonderful sport. It really, really is. And I, I would be in favor of, I mean, I am in favor of. Ken?
Yes, this is not meant to be a put-down, but did you receive information about attending the meeting?
I've kept my, an agenda of my things. I got the meeting, this was dated March 15th, and the meeting was on March 29th. I was going to be out of town at that time. So to the chairman, Lynn Verver, I wrote a letter and I expect my, expressed my concerns and I sent this letter to them. And then I thought the meeting on March 29th was just about concerns. It wasn't about approval or disapproval. And I understood from talking to many people in that meeting that we packed the community room at the library where it was held and they had to bring in more chairs. That was the last I heard of it. And then, I don't read the council agendas like I should in the, in the paper. I'm sorry. All of a sudden, they're painting white lines outside the front of my house. And I know this picture, that's my information on what signs cost. This picture was in the newspaper and Howard and I had a very friendly discussion. I go, it's probably water under the bridge, and he goes, yeah. So they were painting the lines already, but I never had further follow-up after the March 29th meeting. And then to see this approved at, on the, I think I wrote on my notes, it got approval August the 9th. Because I would have addressed this sooner. It's my own ignorance, I must admit. Because you do a wonderful job of posting things. Yes, the city does. But I, I just didn't know it was going to happen. I, I thought it was approval, it wasn't approval or disapproval at the March 29th meeting. It was for the gathering of facts. And I've talked to other, Ridge is an elderly street. There aren't a lot of little kids there. And I've talked to people on the south side and I go, oh, it doesn't impact you. And the lady goes, I've seen bike trafficking increase fourfold since the bike lane went in. And this is on sunny, nice days. People don't ride their bikes when it's raining generally. And she says, it's hard, and she's a retired schoolteacher who lives on Ridge. She says, I can't, I can't, it's hard for me to bike, back out of my garage because I have more pedestrians, more bikers, more cars. So it's, it, it creates a challenge for, for her.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so what we have before us is a recommendation to approve the enclosed maps as the bicycle route plan for Platteville. So if this is approved, this would be something that the Safe Routes Committee would look at again? Hold public meetings with the people in that area? Was that the, my understanding is correct?
Yes.
So it's not that we are approving the map, that the bicycle routes have been approved?
This is not a final approval of individual routes. These are suggested routes to get to, through the city, especially this north side. And so each individual street or segment that we're looking at would follow the process of public information meetings and then coming back to the council with specific recommendations for those individual street segments. Do we do charros? Do we do bike lanes? Do we do something else in those areas to enhance bicycle connectivity?
So, so to put this into historical context again too, when we, when I was on the Community Safe Routes Committee last year, when we first started the idea of putting bike lanes on Ridge Avenue, we had kicked around different ways to achieve bike lanes in general. And the, the really straightforward way would be to just go to the council and say we want a bike lane and have the council approve or disapprove it and be done. So the community, the committee thought it would be better to, to reach out to the street and, and give everybody an invite to a community meeting and see if there were concerns and if so, could they be assuaged or how the neighborhood felt about it. When I was at the community meeting, I did feel like generally speaking, I was surprised at how well received the idea was, so maybe we misinterpreted that a little. But I really did think that generally speaking, the room was pretty in favor of the, the lanes with some, with some concerns that we've worked to address somewhat. So I would say that my impression is that that process was a decent one, that reaching out to the street is something that worked. What I'm hearing tonight maybe as a lesson learned is after going back and looking through the concerns, which the committee did and the council did, maybe we reach out to the street a second time to say, these are the things we've heard and, and write a direct letter, which I know is expensive and time consuming for our staff, but it would maybe worth it to do if we move forward with this. I'm looking at Don because he's now the representative on the Community Safe Routes Committee. So a takeaway here would be the process that we began with was a pretty good start, but the tweak would be maybe a second meeting or a second letter followed up to streets to make sure they understand what's happening before it's finalized. We did have these discussions, like I said, with the council, but I understand that that may not have made it back to the neighborhood itself. So something for the committee to think about. But then what I understand is as we look at the map tonight and if we approve it, it doesn't mean lanes or anything is necessarily going on any one of these streets. It's just highlighting which streets the Community Safe Routes Committee will then reach out to, to discuss options with in the future. Don, am I representing this well, you think?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for the feedback tonight too, because this was a new process. So it's really, really excellent to be able to hear how people reacted to it.
Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the map included in our packet that designates the highlighted streets on the map as bicycle routes for the city of Platteville.
I will second.
All right.
So this is basically a study?
Basically a study. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for your comments, and I would say continue to keep us informed through staff about other concerns that you might have because that will be helpful. You know, we want something that will be beneficial to everyone as much as we can. Everybody probably will have to make a little change, but hopefully it won't be drastic. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Information and discussion items, Plan Unit Development at 545 West Adams. Joe?
Okay. The property at 545 West Adams Street, it's a vacant lot at the far west end of Adams Street, essentially the dead-end portion of Adams Street. The lot owner has a desire to put two new duplexes on that lot. The property is zoned R2, which allows duplexes. It's large enough in area to accommodate two duplexes, but it doesn't have enough lot frontage to meet our ordinance requirements for two duplexes. So he, and plus, you can see by the map, it's kind of unusual shape, so he doesn't have the ability to divide it in two to accommodate two duplexes. So he has submitted the Plan Unit Development request to allow the second duplex to be constructed. So there was a couple of concerns that staff had regarding that. Since I'm, you know, basically, it's the right zoning, and it's a large enough parcel, so theoretically it could be accommodated. But there are some concerns about the parking layout and the access as submitted originally. We've learned through experience that the two-car garage and the pad in front of it meets the ordinance requirements as far as amount of parking, but when you have to move one vehicle to get another vehicle out, it tends not to work very well for rental properties. So we end up having vehicles parking on the street if that's the situation. So we'd like to see some changes regarding that. Some sidewalks, I should point out, and I forgot to do that to Plan Commission again. There is an updated plan that was submitted to Plan Commission. I put that on your tables. We just got that at the meeting last night. But initial concern about sidewalks connecting the parking areas to the building. There were some retaining walls identified on the property, on the plan. Depending on their height, we might need to see some fences or barriers or other things to prevent people from accidentally falling over those walls if they're cutting through the property in the dark, which has happened in other locations. We'd like to see some landscaping, especially due to that layout. You're going to have some vehicle headlights shining in rear and side yards, which would be less than desirable from the neighboring properties. And we would like to see some additional, obviously, building and material design for the buildings. And it wasn't identified in that initial report, but we also had some concerns about the grading plan is initially drawn up, showing some filling towards that drainage area to the north. So that was also addressed in the revised plan. The Plan Commission did consider this last night, and on a split vote, I think it was a four to three vote, recommended denial of the request. So this will be a public hearing at your next meeting. Any questions?
I like that there's a rain garden noted on the site design.
They were trying to address some of the concerns about the runoff from the development, because there is, it's not a flood plain to the north there, but it is a major drainage ditch.
Pretty bad area for that.
So they're trying to contain some of that, or at least slow it down.
Do we have any formal guidelines for what we consider a rain garden? Because we may want to consider that as we move forward, that if they're saying they're putting a rain garden in, we may want to make sure it actually acts as a rain garden, so.
At this point, we don't, but the document that you just looked at would address some of that.
It does?
Well, the stormwater plan talks about.
Oh, that's what you mean. Right, right, right. Okay. I thought you meant in here.
The thick plan.
I don't think it defined the rain garden specifics, did it?
Yes, there's, in the thick plan it's given.
There was an example in it? I missed that. Okay. Thank you.
You may want to take a look at that.
Much closer, apparently.
All right. Any other questions on this request?
At the meeting, Plan Commission, let's see, yeah, quite a few people spoke against this project. Will the minutes be available to the council, Jan, for the next meeting, even though the minutes will not be approved yet by the Plan Commission?
Make the draft minutes available.
Okay. Because I think it's good to see what was brought up, and the people's names, et cetera, location, where they live. Thank you.
I'll return to the rain garden comment one more time, though. Even though it's in the stormwater management plan, that doesn't mean that we have adopted standards. So if we are going to approve this, it would be nice to make sure that we are actually meeting them beforehand, just that we're complying.
If the first, I should mention, the Plan Unit Development is a two-step approval process. If it gets, if the first step gets approved, then we can get into additional details.
Yep.
Regarding the developed landscaping, so we can request additional specific designs and so forth on the rain gardens, landscaping, topography, whatever.
Thank you, Joe.
Other questions or comments on the Plan Unit Development request? All right. Then we're going to go on to Resolution 1619, amending the 2016 fee schedule for temporary sign.
The council took action at the public hearing in August to create separate fees for permanent signage and temporary signage, and attached resolution revises the fee schedule to include this directive.
All right. So we need to do that, establish the fee schedule. Any questions on that, anyone? All right. Seeing none, we'll go on to C, which is Delta III Contract Extension 2017 to 2019.
Yes. We've been working on many different things over the, over the course of the year, some additional items that have come up, including our lead service line replacement and the work with the library block and Pioneer Ford. It's been, we would normally look at bidding out a project like this, but based on these, based on these additional projects, we don't believe that there's sufficient staff time to do a good job in making that happen. We have had a, we've had a very good job done by Delta III Engineering. So we asked for a proposal for an extension of their existing contract, and so they would be looking, if we granted an extension to the existing contract for three years, 2017 through the end of 2019, they're requesting an average or approximate 3% over the current rates. The current rates had been in place since 2012, so this would be their first increase in five years for that. So they were looking at, asking if the council would consider granting an extension to that contract. If you have questions, Dan from Delta III is here.
And I might make just a couple of additional comments. Philosophically, I think we believe that if you're contracting a service, you need to, at times, bid that service out, and that goes hand in hand with contracting. When you do bid out the service, there's both the time involved in the actual going through the bidding process, the RFP process, but then there's also the time to sort of bring that new service provider up to speed with respect to learning about your city, your staff, and all that's going on. And as Howard alluded to, as I'm kind of just reflecting on my first year here, I mean, Howard has a fairly robust job just dealing with the street replacements, managing the park maintenance, the street maintenance team, and our utility operations, and sort of all the ongoing work associated with that. This year, in addition, we had the first year of our bus operations, which he was the lead person on, the stormwater management plan, which he worked in conjunction with Delta III on, the industry park addition, the David Canney Trail. He's the lead in terms of the actual construction liaison with the library block. We had the relocation of the clinic into a City Hall building, which Howard was also the lead on in terms of getting that space ready and working with the contractor. We've been looking at City Hall or HVAC system, as well as the potential for a guaranteed energy savings contract, wastewater treatment plant capacity. We've been doing a study on that, as well as working with some businesses coming into town with respect to their impact on our wastewater treatment plant. And then, as you mentioned, the lead service line. So it has been just a very, very busy year, just in the year that I've been here. I think a little unusually busy, and that's why I think it presents a challenge for us to make this transition at this time.
Questions or comments, anyone?
Well, how many years has Delta III been the engineer for the city? I'm asking Dan. Six. Six.
All right. The answer is six.
Fine language.
If you have other questions, you need to have, we'll have Dan come up to the microphones so he can answer them. Any other questions?
Just a comment that it has been a really busy 12 months, two years. It's been pretty crazy.
A lot of progress. All right. Anything else? Our work session that we originally talked about having this evening is not happening, and so unless anybody has anything else, motion to adjourn will be appropriate.
I move to adjourn. Happy to make the motion.
Go second. A second. Motion and a second, we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seebolt Wilson?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.